Next, Janai Hahn from the CCA Faculty Union.
Good evening. Just on behalf of the CCA Faculty, our full-time Faculty Union at the college, I would like to welcome Vivian Malauulu to the Board, our first elected Latina, to the LBCCD Board. We also congratulate Doug Otto on his reelection as trustee and also to President Oakley, congratulations on your new position. And CCA looks forward to working very closely with the Board of Trustees in selecting our next president superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Los Angeles Port Commissioner Dave Arian.
Just on behalf of Janice Hahn, our Congresswoman, we want to honor, she wants to honor Vivian, but to go beyond that, I know Vivian when she came into the Union, but more than that, when I was getting ready to leave the industry, I was interested in writing a short book, you know, to explain to the new membership coming in, the history and traditions, and what Vivian did was translate it into English for me. It was interesting. It was two weeks before she had COA, and we had a deadline, and she says, "I can do it. I can do it." And she got it done maybe the week before she went in to deliver her beautiful son. Beyond that, I don't know how many of you watched TV last night, but how great America really is. And when we saw Michelle Obama and her family, put us down in the politics. But look at her and Barack and her two daughters, just as a family. And when I look at Vivian and her husband and the four kids, that's what I see. And that is what has convinced me about how special this woman is. We can do all these other things in life, but if we don't take care of our family and our kids coming up, then we sort of, you know, have failed. And she's never, no matter what she's done in her life, they've come first. It's lucky she has a great husband, and it's lucky that Michelle has a great husband, you know. But I just want to say on behalf of not only Janice, but on behalf of the ILW, particularly the Penitentiars Group, and I know as part of the Port Commission, we look at this woman as being special. Not only special for this junior college, but special for this country. That's who we're about. So, we're honored, you know, and I'm honored to be able, Janice asked me to make this presentation because it gave me time to just say, hey, they're wonderful.
Commissioner Dines, did you want to say something?
Thank you, President Otto. I did not bring a certificate from the port, but perhaps Vice President Bynum and I can talk about that later. It's something we can work on in the future. For those, I think everyone knows, Luanne Bynum's the Vice President of the Board at Long Beach. So, I just wanted to congratulate your reelection, President Otto, and for Vivian, I know everyone knows Vivian. I'm very proud of Vivian as a waterfront worker. I think she represents the ILW very well, and I know she will represent this great community college district just as well. And Vivian, I love you. I think you're the best, and I'm very proud of you. And don't worry, we will hold you accountable. Congratulations. I'm sorry, maybe next time I'll bring you a certificate. Thank you very much.
Next, my wife, Frida Otto.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to take a moment to add my congratulations to Vivian for her election as a trustee to this great institution. And I want to congratulate my husband Doug Otto for his election to his fourth term. I want to publicly thank our many friends and supporters that are here tonight. You're here for us, and we appreciate it so much. It means a great deal to see you here and to know that you've been behind us for so long and in so many ways. I believe that the people who voted for Doug understand that Doug's reason for running for College Trustee never was and never has been self-serving. He is a public servant in the truest sense of the word, and his passion for Long Beach City College and its great mission of offering a better life to the people of Long Beach through education is one of the most important things in his life. I believe you all know that Doug is a real product of this college, and he never hesitates to attribute his educational pathway to some of the finest universities in the country: Stanford, Union Theological Seminary, Columbia University, and the University of Chicago Law School. He attributed it to the start he got right here at Long Beach City College. This college and its success mean a great deal to Doug. I can tell you that he gets up every morning, every morning, talking about the issues the college is facing. And many of you know that because you've gotten his emails first thing in the morning. He talks about and ponders how he can forge a strong relationship with his fellow trustees, how he can develop and collaborate a strong relationship with the college administrators that he works with on a regular basis, and how he can develop a good, solid, productive, and important working relationship with the faculty. He never hesitates to put in the hours that are needed to accomplish the important goals for this college, and the college is a better place for the 12 years that he has spent here as a trustee. I want you to know that you have elected a good man to this important office, and he will not let you down. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Brezina.
Thank you. On behalf of Mayor Garcia... Yeah, there we go. Trustee Malauulu. Mayor Garcia regrets he couldn't be here. He's in Philadelphia. Would have loved to congratulate you in person, and I'm sure will do so the next time he sees you. He's certain you're going to do an outstanding job. Your commitment to the students, to education, to progressive values is apparent to all, and everyone in our office looks forward to working with you. I know you know that education is very important to my boss, and so, you know, we're just pleased to see you up here and really looking forward to working together. Trustee Otto, the mayor and you have a long relationship. You've been a good friend and an advisor, and he asked me to read from a letter that he's written. "It's my honor and pleasure to take a moment to congratulate Doug Otto on his reelection to the Board of Trustees. Doug has served our community in many capacities for more than 25 years, and his intelligence, compassion, and dedication to service are unquestionable. Doug has a powerful understanding of the issues facing our educational institutions and has demonstrated his ability to work with his fellow trustees, the college president, faculty, and students, as well as the community at large, to tackle those issues. I know of no one who has given more to our city and to the students of our city college than Doug Otto, and I'm proud to congratulate you, Doug. I know you'll continue to do great work, and I look forward to working together on the issues important to this community. With great respect, Mayor Robert Garcia." I just want to also add, Doug, my personal congratulations. I'm really glad to know you and Frida, and look forward to seeing you again many times. And I would be remiss, I think, if I also didn't congratulate President Oakley. It's going to be great to have you working at the state level. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. That's the beginning of the governance part of what we're doing, the congratulations to the newly-elected and re-elected trustees. So, we're going to return to our regular agenda, and 3.10 is reordering of the agenda. Are there any requests to reorder the agenda? I've heard of none so far. Then we will move on to 3.11. These are public comments on agenda items. We have no cards for public comments on agenda items, and so we will move on to 4.1, which is the annual reorganization of the Board of Trustees. And I am going to turn the seat here over to our Superintendent President, Eloy Oakley, who is the Secretary of the Board, who will take over the meeting as acting chair until a new chair and Vice President are elected.
Thank you, Trustee Otto, and let me add my congratulations to you and to trustee Malauulu as well. This is my favorite time of the year. I get to run the Board for a few minutes, just as Superintendent Torleksen is the governor of the State of California. For now, I get to be the governor of the college for a few minutes. Anyway, we are here at the annual reorganization of the Board of Trustees, and so I will assume the role as the Board Chair while the nomination process is carried out. And we elect a new Board President and a new Board Vice President. Afterwards, we will rearrange the seating, and I will go back to my usual spot. So, pursuant to Board Policy Regulation 2015.1, at the annual organization meeting, the Board of Trustees shall elect officers for the succeeding year. I hereby open the floor to nominations for President of the Board for 2016, 2017.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes, the Chair recognizes trustee Kellogg.
Thank you. I would like to nominate trustee Baxter for the position of President of the Board.
Wonderful. Any other nominations? Hearing none, then I declare the nominations closed.
I'm sorry. I apologize. Can I nominate for Vice President now, or?
Not yet.
Okay, got it. Got it. Thank you.
Then I declare the nominations closed. Ms. Hahn, will you please call the roll?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Aye.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
Sunny Zia.
Aye.
Congratulations, Board President Baxter. Want to do this?
Excuse me, Mr. President Oakley, would you hold on one moment? We have to correct the vote here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving on to the nomination for Vice President of the Board, so pursuant to...
I'm sorry.
Pursuant to Board Policy Regulation 2015.1, at the annual organization meeting, the Board of Trustees shall elect officers for the succeeding year. I hereby open the floor for nominations for Vice President of the Board for 2016, 2017.
Mr. President?
Whose voice did I hear?
Mine.
Trustee Otto?
Would nominate Jeff Kellogg.
Is there a second?
We don't need a second.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Any other nominations?
Yes, I think, I don't know if this is time for discussion or not. I'm new. It's going to take me a little bit. I would like to nominate trustee Zia, who's been on the Board just as long as trustee Baxter.
Okay, so we have two nominations for Vice President. Any other nominations? Okay, then I declare the nominations are closed. So, this will be a first for us, so we will take a roll call vote for the first nominee.
Are we not having discussion?
We can certainly have discussion.
Yes. Can I, should I, I would like to speak. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. And I do apologize. I've, for the past several weeks, I've been reading a lot, and everything's kind of swimming in my head about protocol, so I might be a little rusty to begin with. Congratulations, trustee Baxter. I'm very happy with the decision that the Board just made to elect her as President, particularly because one of the documents that I've been poring over are the Board Regulations and the rotation of the Board members. And I would like to thank trustee Otto for an amazing job that he did as President. He has certainly led this college, many years of service, and done a great job. In fact, when I interviewed, trustee Kellogg was the President at the time, so he's already had his turn, and the only person up here who hasn't is trustee Zia. And I know that she's done a terrific job on campus representing students and faculty. The reason why I nominated her is to follow the rules that were established and agreed upon by this Board for rotation and fairness, and the fact that we're all here equally now, that we were all elected. And I just think that it would be awesome to have fresh blood leading the Board with trustee Baxter and trustee Zia. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Malauulu. I love that. I love the sound of that. And welcome. I think that we have great trustees here, and, you know, we have rules and regulations we set in place that it's supposed to be rotating, Mr. Kellogg, trustee Kellogg has had his turn. He's been President twice in a row, and I think it's time for us to have an opportunity for all members to have an officer position as the regulations and the policies contemplate. Also, I think my constituents deserve to have someone who's equally elected on the Board have an officer position and represent them, and they shouldn't get second-class treatment. So, with that, I hope I can have your support and your vote, and if I don't, I'll still be okay, and we'll hold it against you. Thank you.
May I?
Go right ahead.
May I have a point of clarification? Where is it written?
It's Regulation 2015.1. It's Section A, Rotation in Terms of Office. Each Board Member shall rotate upward through the three non-officer member positions and the position of Vice President and President, with each position being held by each Board Member for one year. The Board President must have served at least one year as a member of the Board, which it applies to you. So, it's our rules and regulations, and I ask that we follow it. Why else have policy and regulation if we're not going to follow it?
Well, and as a point of clarification, just for the audience, those rules and regulations were suspended about three years ago when the Board decided to elect President Kellogg to a second term because of the transition. It wasn't done arbitrarily, not that I'm saying it needs to be done now, but just as a point of clarification during the Board transition.
Are you saying that it's suspended now? Because in the board item, it does not say it's suspended.
No, what I was clarifying for the audience, trustee Zia, is why the change was made when trustee Otto, I mean trustee Kellogg was elected twice.
Okay. Which doesn't apply here right now, correct?
Well, I would just say then, it is not a just normal rotation. This Board has done it numerous times. That language was put in place if the Board could not come up with a decision on their leadership of the President, the Vice President. So, multiple times it is when they say it's been suspended, if the Board wishes to follow that because they have no other way. That allows for the Board to have some type of transition if there is a, for example, some type of gridlock. But if the Board wishes to not go, that is the discretion of the Board, and it has been the case in the past, so it's nothing new. It is there to make sure there is an election taking place, and the leadership positions are both fulfilled. If the Board cannot come to some conclusion, it gives some framework for the Board to follow if they choose to follow, but it is not required to follow that.
Mr. President?
Yes, go right ahead, trustee Otto.
Section, Board Policy, it's 2015.1F, allows the Board to suspend, alter, or modify the provisions during the annual organizational meeting. And the reason I nominated trustee Kellogg is because of the particular responsibilities that this brand-new Board, in many ways, is about to go through with the election of a Superintendent President. And I think that we have a lot of hard work that needs to be done, and I have confidence in his ability to do that as the Vice President of the Board, and so that's why I nominated him and will be supporting him.
Okay. At this point, Madam Secretary, can you call the roll for the first nomination, trustee Kellogg?
Virginia Baxter.
Aye.
Jeff Kellogg.
Aye.
Vivian Malauulu.
Nay.
Doug Otto.
Aye.
And Sunny Zia.
Nay.
Congratulations, Vice President Kellogg. All right, at this time, we will ask the President and the Vice President to take their seats, and we will reorganize the seating arrangement for the Board of Trustees. The reason we reorganize the seating arrangement is the Board seating arrangement follows a pattern of the President and Vice President sitting next to each other. Typically, the newest trustee sits next to the Superintendent President in case there's questions that come up through a Board meeting. She doesn't have to throw a rock at me, and the rest of the arrangement is pretty much at random. So, at this point, Madam Secretary, I will trust your judgment in how to arrange that, and we will move around.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good for you, my lady.
Thank you.
Jeff, congratulations.
Vivian goes where you are.
I'll be yourself taking the two.
Really?
Yeah.
They took pictures of him sleeping?
I think Denise did.
We're just swapping. You would have been a great Vice President.
Am I in the right?
And where does Doug go?
I don't know. They put all those away.
My, where does Doug go?
Sunny's over here.
He's here? Jeff, no, Jeff goes here?
Welcome, neighbor.
Thank you.
I will not... Jeff, you're the only one that gets to stay.
It just makes it easier in case questions come up.
Sorry. Jenny, is this you?
Yeah.
This is going to go on your...
All right. Now we have a presentation, and I'm going to defer to Eloy.
Yes, so as a tradition here, we honor the outgoing Board President with special recognition. So, in recognition of Board President Doug Otto's service from 2015 to 2016, the Long Beach Community College District Board of Trustees and the Superintendent President will present... Where did he go? He's over there. Where's his award going? Present him a nice commemoration of his year of service, and I want to personally say, since this will be my last chance to say it, thank you, Doug, for your service to the Board of Trustees. You serve countless hours that are never recognized and certainly aren't paid. I think you owe us money for the hours that you worked based on what we pay you. So, congratulations and thank you for your service. Turn it back over to you, trustee Baxter, while we take a picture.
Okay. Do I keep going with the meeting?
No.
No. Okay. I can talk. Well, thank you for, Board Members, for electing me. I will try to do a good job, and I will call on all of you to help me and give me sage advice. Doug, as you're walking up here, I want to thank you for your service. You've been great at contacting us. I don't know if you all know that Doug was instrumental in the Bond campaign and representing the Board in the Bond campaign, and he has just been elected the trustee to the CCC Board as their President, which is California Community College Trustees. So, that's quite an honor, and congratulations for that.
President?
Trustee Kellogg?
Thank you, President Baxter. I also would like to thank Doug for your, the past year. Many people, they view the especially in leadership roles and the role of the Presidency. It is a very challenging job. Many times, people don't really know what goes into it. I used to say it's not, it's not like you're, you know, taking role and checking out balls at a playground. There's a lot of things that go into it. You're managing an agenda. You're also working with colleagues to try to make that agenda, and that in itself is a challenge. You also deal with the crisis management that comes with any elective office, that you simply, an issue shows up, and you have to put some framework around it to address the issue on behalf of the college. So, it is something that is very challenging for anyone that's been in that role, but we've been very fortunate the past year with Doug's leadership. And as President Baxter did mention, it was also juggling the fact that with the State of California, essentially leading the trustee organization of, I think it's 450 trustees. So, it really is my compliments to Doug Otto for the past year for all this hard work and on issues that have come before us. A trustee, and I say this to everybody as we go into this year, a Board Chair is only as good as how the Board will allow that chair to be. In other words, if you work with the Board Chair, you help, you will make everything a lot easier for everyone. And so, I look forward to the next year with trustee Baxter, but also, again, my thanks to Doug for your hard work and dedication as we move the college forward. So, nice job, Doug. Congratulations. Thank you, President Baxter.
Okay. We're going on to 4.4, Representative to the Los Angeles County Commission on School-District Organizations. And do I call for nominations, or may I nominate someone?
You may nominate someone.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Sunny Zia to be our representative on the Los Angeles County Committee on School-District Organization.
Thank you. Can someone explain what this representative role would do before I accept the nomination?
There are about 600 meetings a year, and they're all in faraway places.
So, the Board Chair has the prerogative to assign whoever she wants, but no, it's seriously, it is an organization of governing boards in LA County. Representatives from each community college district are there. I think people like Scott Sfonkin is the representative from the LA Community College District. I'm sure you know Scott and a few others. And so, they discuss things that are relevant to colleges and school districts in LA County. There's a representative from each Board of Trustees that is designated annually, and...
What do they do? What do they do?
So, they talk about issues about, if there's a new district that's going to be formed, they discuss it, make recommendations. They talk about transferring territory between or among school districts, so any transfer of territory has to go through that body first. So, issues that involve the various territories, school districts, and the community colleges overlapping, or there's a need to discuss before decisions are made for any one college district or school district.